I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Buck has an excused absence. Vice Chair Schmunk?
Here.
Commissioner Driggs?
Here.
Commissioner Ackland?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Greenwell?
Here.
And Commissioner Weber?
Here.
Okay, any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Those in attendance in person recite the pledge. Those online are muted, please, okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any corrections to the minutes from September 3rd, September 16th, as published in the packet? Ready? Okay. If there's no corrections, the minutes from September 3rd and 16th, 2025 are approved. All right. Okay, we'll now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission, not otherwise on the agenda tonight. Later in our meeting, we will be, we will, there will be a public hearing with an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on specific topic of the proposed zoning map amendment for 2650 Main Street, Springfield. If anyone's online or in the audience, announce, okay, so there's folks in the audience, sorry. If you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on your Zoom call or star nine if joining by phone. If you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present with the Planning Commission Assistant. When called to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. We have anybody?
We have two people online and no one has raised their hands. And I see no one in the audience that is raising, has submitted a card to me. So we can do.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to call the first agenda item, zoning map amendment for 2650 Main Street. So I will now open the public hearing on this item. We'll start by asking Planning Commissioners to disclose any conflicts of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, personal knowledge of relevant facts.
Commissioner Schmunk, before you do that, let's have Mary Bridget give her a little spiel for the legal.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Mary Bridget Smith. I work as the city attorney. I'm going to be providing the advice of rights for the quasi judicial matter that's before you. This is information for people in the audience and the applicant about their rights at this quasi judicial hearing. So I'll just go ahead now and then if you have any questions at the end, please let me know. The role of the Planning Commission in this public hearing is to make a decision on whether to approve an application for a zoning map amendment. In making this decision, the Commission must apply the law of Springfield and cannot vary or change from that criteria or law. The Planning Commission is to be unbiased in this hearing decision. Before the start of the hearing, the Commissioners will state whether they have a potential or actual conflict of interest. A potential conflict of interest occurs if the Commission's decision, Commissioners' decision could result in a financial benefit or avoiding a financial detriment for themselves, their household members, their family, or a business with which they're associated. An actual conflict of interest occurs if the Commissioner's decision would have that result. If there's a potential conflict, the Commissioner may still participate in the deliberations and decision as long as they are without actual bias. If actual bias or an actual conflict exists, the Commissioner must step down from the dais during the case and may not participate in the deliberations or decision making. Commissioners will also state whether they have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a site visit. If any Commissioner has such ex parte contacts or independent knowledge, they must disclose the substance of that contact or knowledge if that information is not already included in the record. During the time for public testimony, a witness may challenge the impartiality of a Commissioner and the Commissioner may rebut the substance of the knowledge of the facts. The Commissioner in question may respond to such a challenge. A copy of the procedures and agenda for today's hearing and copies of the staff reports are posted on the city's website at Springfield Oregon Speaks. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. If you want the Planning Commission to consider your testimony and to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the Commission closes the record. You must raise the issue clearly enough so people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue on appeal. If you are the applicant, you must raise concerns about any conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the Commission to respond and to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. If you believe you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony, you can ask them to hold the record open or to continue the hearing. You must make that request before the Chair closes the public portion of the hearing. If the Planning Commission holds open the record, you could submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before they make their decision. If they continue the hearing, then you can provide additional oral and written testimony, including new evidence can be offered at that future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or if the record is held open for any reason, state law provides that we must hold the record open for at least seven days after it is closed for all the parties to allow the applicant to submit the final arguments. Please make sure your testimony is related to the applicable criteria. The criteria for zoning map amendment are in Springfield Development Code, Section 5.22.115 Sub C. And they're described in more detail in the staff report in tonight's agenda. Staff will also summarize that. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from a phone or online that are out of term will not be part of the record. Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any Planning Commissioner wishes to declare any potential or actual conflicts of interest, ex parte contact, or independent knowledge of relevant facts. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Smith. So I kind of rushed this, I'll read this again. I'll now open the public hearing on this item. I'll start by asking Planning Commissioners to disclose any conflicts of interest, bias, or any ex parte contact or personal knowledge of relevant facts. Roll call.
Sure, Commissioner Ackland?
No known conflicts of interest. I had a brief ex parte contact with the applicant regarding driving by and wondering what had been going on at that site.
Commissioner Greenwell?
No conflict of interest that I'm aware of, no bias, and I have had no ex parte contact in this matter.
Commissioner Thompson?
No conflicts of interest, bias, or ex parte contact.
Comis-, uh, Vice Chair Schmunk?
No conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact.
Commissioner Driggs?
No conflicts of interest and no ex parte contact.
And Commissioner Weber?
No conflicts of interest.
Okay, thank you. So now if there are any challenges to the Commissioner's disclosure or qualifications to hear the matter, or are there any? And are there any objections to the Planning Commission's jurisdiction to hear this matter? I went online, no arms raised, okay. Okay, now's the time for the, for Senior Planner Andy Lindberg's staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm just going to bring up a PowerPoint presentation just to show the site and what's being proposed at this location. Most people are familiar with this site. It's highly visible on Main Street, near the corner of 28th and Main, on the north side, operated for many, many years as the Schmunks Tire Center. Couple of years ago, it closed. It was sold to another party. It remained vacant for a couple of years. And now the applicant and property owner are advancing a request to rezone the property to commercial, community commercial, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan designation and the mid Springfield refinement plan designation for this property. It is currently mostly heavy industrial. There is a corner of the property that is already community commercial. So it has a split zoning. The request is being advanced to allow for a use to be reestablished on the site. The use would be predominantly auto-related, automobile-dependent with auto servicing, detailing, engine testing, performance testing, that sort of thing. The window tinting, that sort of thing. So that's, that is what is currently being proposed. With the rezoning proposal, should it be changed to community commercial? In theory, any type of commercial use in the city could be allowable on the site. We're going with the current proposal and the applicant will be making a presentation on what their proposal is this evening in association with this rezoning request. But to be clear, once the site's rezoned to commercial, if for some reason this proposal falls through, the site remains commercial, another type of commercial activity could be proposed for the site. Any type of use on the site would have to go through a site plan review. So there would be another opportunity for a public review and comment, regardless of what type of use is being proposed. So hopefully I can get this thing to work here. Nope, maybe not. Did I close it? Sorry. Oh, I'm going too fast. Okay, so there's the site. Concurrently with rezoning of the parcels, staff is recommending that the northern half, as measured from center line of Main Street, is rezoned. That will be, bring the zoning map into alignment along Main Street where the zoning typically extends to the center line. The comprehensive plan does not include public rights away with zoning, but the zoning map does. So this would clean up a little bit of an anomaly, a discrepancy along the adjoining property, which is also commercial. It would extend that zoning into the center line of Main Street. So the current zoning has a commercially zoned property adjoining it to the southeast, two linear strips of land that comprise much of the site as heavy industrial. And then the heavy industrial zoning boundary basically encompasses the entire area. With the proposal, the commercial zoning would be extended into the center line of Main Street. So the entire property, as well as the frontage of the adjoining property to the east, would be commercial. So staff has prepared a report which outlines that this proposal is consistent with the criteria of approval for a zoning map amendment. And in particular, the city's comprehensive plan encourages zoning changes that bring properties into alignment with the comprehensive plan. The city's land base is based on the designation. So sites that are available for industrial, commercial, residential are determined based on their designation, not necessarily the current zoning. So this site has already been identified in the city's comprehensive plan as a commercial site. And the rezoning of the site would then allow for commercial uses which are listed in the city's development code to be established on the site through a site plan review. Currently, as I mentioned, the proposal is to reestablish automobile-related uses on the site. Essentially, that's the staff presentation. I know the applicant is here. They are prepared to make a presentation as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's a relatively straightforward zoning map amendment this evening. So that's what you have before you tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Questions from Commissioners, anybody? Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Greenwell.
That's me. Through rezoning, is there any burden on adjoining properties? I guess I'm specifically thinking about fire codes. Would there be any change required by the commercial next door? Shouldn't be if it's going zone to zone, but I did think of that when I was reviewing it.
There should not be anything related to it. In order to reestablish occupancy, there will be building permit and building inspections will be required. My understanding is that there's a pretty robust fire suppression system already on the site because of the nature of the activities that were there previously. There's two fire hydrants along the frontage. I believe some of the buildings are sprinkled already. So it should, and they're, they're built like with steel framing and masonry and that sort of thing. So there's not a high fire risk and it won't change because the, it's, the building codes are the same for the independence of the zoning.
Hey, anybody else, any other questions?
Vice Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
This is more of a procedural question out of just curiosity. On page three of the staff report, Policy E1, I'll just read implementation strategy. 1.3 states the city shall encourage and support redesignation, rezoning, environmental cleanup, and redevelopment of brownfields and older industrial sites to allow these lands to redevelop with clean industries and new uses. Just out of curiosity, if, it sounds like this is a great plan in that it will be basically being changed to be more compliant with the existing comp plan, which is great. If during, so 20 years down the road, there's a commercial use and say during the discovery process, it was found that there was contaminants at the site. Historically, who is on kind of the hook for that cleanup? If the parcel does become blighted or is determined to be so?
Typically, it would be whoever or whatever agent, I guess entity was the polluter or the provider of the contaminants. There's no indication on this site. The city does maintain a database of underground like storage tanks and you know, that sort of thing, areas that are known contamination. This is not one of those sites. There is adjoining sites that have that. So there's the, the historical uses on the site with auto and tire servicing and not under like petroleum distribution or storage or anything like that. Don't suggest that there would be any type of contamination on the site. But if someone were to excavate or you know, put in a new building or anything like that, then that would have to be, it would be a private matter for them to do the cleanup because it'd be like a due diligence type of thing as far as an environmental, usually there's like a environmental analysis that's done to see, you know, what is the risk factor based on previous land uses? And so the risk factor is not extremely high for this use with warehousing and storage and auto servicing.
Gotcha, I was just more curious because it was, you know, an industrial use in the past, but I'm familiar with the property, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Lindberg, thank you. All right. So now we'll have a presentation from the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mike Delevry and I own Lockdown Performance. We are the ones that are planning to redo this piece of property and make it something that is usable for the whole community. I unfortunately did not get these over in PDFs at the time. So if we're able to, I did want to present where the building was at versus what we're planning to do and kind of go over what all of our plans are for the complex and what we're going to be having there for the community. Can you guys hear me, am I close enough? Also, Commissioner Thompson, I believe this last year there was a inspection done on the property and we have that as well, but it was for a clean site for it. Because we wanted to use the adjoining lot that had a side gate on it, but they actually have a tank that we can't use over there. So it has been done already. So if we can, I'm going to go ahead and skip one and go to this. This, uh, yeah, can I, if you guys would like. Yeah, so what I'm passing over is a, it is a view of what the building currently is like versus what it's going to be. This is a picture of the building as old building. The next rendering is a rendering of what is going to be coming to the images of what it's going to be looking like. I realize some of you may be a little familiar with these. We plan to repaint the structure. Our company colors are black and gold. So you're going to see a common theme amongst all the images. But we are doing everything about it presents a new look, a new image that's bright, or that bright's kind of a hard term, but is meant to draw attention to the community. We're bringing in local artists that are going to be doing graffiti work throughout the buildings, even the local gentleman with Does the Simpsons is going to be a part. We are bringing in greenery to the back area. We're going to add in, it's going to be a turf in the back area. But out in front of the building, we are adding in trees and a whole entire section out front that's going to be a whole landscaped area out front. So that we bring in the greenery out front. The last two photos that you'll be seeing is actually, we started going in there and just doing general tenant upgrades, as you will. We wanted to paint it and give kind of an example of what we're bringing to the table. So it completely transforms the entire place. But kind of starting left to right on this building, we do plan to be 100% automotive relative. Even our coffee place is automotive related. So the first four bays, we plan to have a tire center. The next area, which was previously the retail store, will be a full retail store. We're bringing in retailers associated with our business that are never been on the West Coast even. Will be, and some of them aren't going to make sense to you, but for different companies out there, for example, Drift HQ will be the first West Coast dealer for them here on, here. It brings in a different caliber of, of drivers, different caliber of car-related individuals to the West Coast that are never here besides in California. So that will be our full retail store down below. Up above it, we plan to, it's going to be for kids. We wanted to provide something that could touch every age group. Up above, it's going to be a whole RC Drift Lounge with arcades and simulators up there. So you'll be able to be getting your tires done and the kids could be upstairs playing on simulators or playing games. Next to it, we have Custom Car Audio, another audio company that will be taking over the next two bays. So, and we are bringing in three businesses that we are associated with and partnered with that will be promoting other businesses in the community as well. Following next to that will be the new caffeine garage. We have in the plan that we want to have our own coffee place. I own an energy drink company. And so my fiancee, sitting next to me, she is going to be opening up the caffeine garage. It is 100% automotive themed. Even the tables you sit at are going to be engines with a glass top on them to be able to enjoy your coffee. Next to it is going to be a full detail auto shop that can do ceramic coating, tint jobs, do a wrap, detail, everything you could think of automotive, that style. On the premises, we have a lot of artwork being done. We're hiring professional graffiti artists to come through, including the gentleman that did all the Simpsons throughout the community. He stopped by, he will be presenting something there. We plan to have every single Simpson hidden in our graphics that are going on the building so that it's a scavenger hunt whenever people are there to try to find different ones. All be car-related themes. So you might see Homer driving some car hidden, doing a wheelie somewhere or something. So yeah, this is, well, no, it's fine. It's just, they're there too. So that is on the front half of the building. We do plan to use the alignment center for commercial trucks to go through there. The facility is there, but one of my graffiti artists, he's also a barber. So we plan to have a local barber that can sit there. So if you need to get a haircut while getting your car work done, he'll be up top. And the back building is our performance center. It's where I personally, for our company, will have my LP garage. We plan to put a dyno machine, alignment machines to be able to tune high-performance cars through there. We would like to do a four-wheel dyno, which will be the first one in Lane County to where any caliber of car can come to our, to this county and actually get tuned for once. It's never been done here. So we plan to have car inside our bays. We have a lot of vehicles ourselves. So we're going to maintain it just as kind of car storage in there and put in our office. But other than that, it'll be a storage place up top for our products and the stuff we offer. We own a number of events, so we want to be sure we have all of our stuff onsite and organized there. So, and, and outside usage, you know, we want to be able to bring the community around and do different things, various small things for the community. Like, we'd like to have a movie night there every now and then and have a movie onsite. So we want to try to do things that could bring the community around, bring them together. For a living, we travel the country to events. I mean, every weekend, we're almost gone for different events throughout the country and stuff that if you're a car person, you never get to experience when you're here locally. We want to be able to bring that experience here and let people see the caliber of what we can do. So at this time, do any of you guys have questions for me?
So I'm familiar with the intersection of 28th and Main. And I know that it can get pretty backed up, especially when the train is passing. It just, you know, cars stopped all the way down the road. And so I'm curious about, you know, it sounds like you're going to have a lot of cars coming and going. Are you going to have driveways on both the south and east side? Like, what do you plan to do with the traffic that you're adding to that intersection?
Yes, of course. So we plan to keep the entrances open, but they're going to be directional. We don't want people being able to come in. So there'll be an entrance and an exit for there. We would like to keep everything directional. We know that there's some of the areas where there's parking spots right now are not in a convenient place. If you had to back out, you might cause traffic jam in there. So we're moving all the parking spots around. And when we present our actual plan, site plan for it, we'll have a full view of what that'll look like for you. But it's designed to make it to where traffic flows simple. We don't want to cause any issues. We want it to be a super smooth process to pull in. We also have the option to open up the gates. You could park out back and drive all the way around too, to just keep a solid flow of traffic.
I'm glad you're thinking about it, thank you.
Well, okay, if no other questions, I just, I have a question. I just want to say, you know, appreciate your risk and your capital in Springfield. It sounds like it's quite an investment for you and, and, you know, Springfield needs activity. So appreciate that. It's outside Commissioners' responsibility, but wanted to, wanted to share that.
Thank you.
So, okay, well, I appreciate your presentation, thank you. Okay, now we're going to call for public testimony. Now's the time for public testimony and we'll start with those in favor, followed by those neither in favor nor opposed and conclude with those opposed. If you'd like to speak and are joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or Zoom press, or Zoom or press nine if joining by phone. And if you're here in person, please fill out a request card and present it to the Planning Commission Assistant. When called to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep comments to three minutes. And any hands raised?
There are no hands raised online and I have received no request to speak cards.
Okay, thank you.
We have one online.
Okay. So.
I have just allowed them to speak, they should be able to.
Go ahead, please state your name.
David Schmunk.
Go ahead, please.
6235 Thurston Road. I had the pleasure to meet Mike and Katie about three weeks ago. And what they have planned is amazing. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Not hearing you well.
I think he's done.
He's done?
He's done.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Okay, anybody else? All right. So Andy, any, well, any response to testimony at all? Anything? Okay, thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant or staff regarding the staff report or the questions people have testified to? Anybody? Commissioner Greenwell?
Yeah, just to follow up on Commissioner at the other end there, whose name I embarrassingly can't remember at the time. You, the other one.
Kelly.
Questions, Kelly, thank you. The question is for Andy. As this goes forward, and I think you mentioned or somebody did that it will, the actual proposal for the improvements to the building and the use will go through Planning Commission or Planning Review. Will a traffic study be part of that?
Not necessarily a full traffic study, but there'll be a traffic analysis just how the driveways will be operating. And that'll be in conjunction with ODOT because of Main Street's purview by ODOT. So there are several driveways. They're pretty large on the site. So staff has already alerted the applicant to the fact that we may need to look at maybe scaling some of the areas back. We know that there's going to be large trucks that'll visit the site, that's fine. But there may be a benefit. Um, but they, there may be a benefit to, um, consolidating or removing one of the driveways in order to get more parking up front, as an example, and also to have a better traffic flow around the site. So there's not cars coming in and going from multiple locations on the site. Um, so, um, all of that will be done through review of the site plan.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, um, we're, uh, uh, we're ready to, for a motion to close the public hearing and, uh, and or public record and continue hearing the, or continue the hearing or hold, uh, open to another date. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Well, I will move that we close the current public hearing.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion of the motion? Okay. I'll now, uh, call for a vote. Uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Commissioner Ackland?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Greenwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schmunk?
Aye.
Commissioner Driggs?
Aye.
And Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes six-zero.
Okay. So, um, are we, so I guess we're, we're ready for a motion to approve the recommendations of the zoning map amendment? So.
Okay, I move to approve the final order as attached to the agenda for this item.
Thank you. Have a second?
Alt-second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Okay, and, um, discussion on the motion. Call for a vote. Take a roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Ackland?
Aye.
Commissioner Greenwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schmunk?
Aye.
Commissioner Driggs?
Aye.
And Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, now we'll hear business from the planning commission. Are there any reports of council actions first? Anybody yet? Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I observed the September 22nd, uh, city council meeting, um, which was, uh, Senior Planner Haley Campbell's presentation, that just mirrored ours, um, about, uh, allowing residential in, uh, commercial areas on Main Street. Um, there wasn't any council-like action per se. Um, their, their thoughts were pretty similar to ours on, um, uh, where to focus and move forward.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Driggs. Okay. Any other business from the planning commission? Anybody? Okay. Any business from the development, uh, and public works departments?
Uh, we do not have a second meeting scheduled for you this month, so we'll see you again in November.
Okay. All right, I, well, I'm sorry. I adjourned the planning commission in a regular meeting. Thank you very much.